Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners work session for Wednesday, May sixth, twenty one. Topic for this session is Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, Basic Plan Update. Public can follow up on our Thurston County YouTube channel or through our conference line, three six zero two five two nine zero two zero. Pan for that is one, two, three, four. My name is Ty, we have Vice Chair Commissioner Gary Edwards, Commissioner Carolina Makhia, as well as County Manager, and we have our emergency management Director Kurt Harden. He's got some folks that show interviews related to today's topic. And we've got an hour, so I'll turn this to the county commissioner.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. A state law requires that Thurston County to develop, implement, and maintain a comprehensive emergency management plan, also known as the C E M P. And the last time the Board of County Commissioners adopted the plan was in two thousand and fifteen. So there is a time to review, update this plan. And also, there is, I believe, a deadline of this year in which the board will have to re-adopt a new revisions of the plan, if I'm correct. So what you hear today from staff is some of those requirements, as well as some of the proposals to update the current plan. That in mind, Kurt?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you. Kurt Harden, Director of Emergency Services. With me is Sandy Ecker. She's the Emergency Management Manager. James Yates, Emergency Manager Coordinator, and Sarah Spearman, also one of the Emergency Management Staff here. What we're going to do today is lay out for you the process to, for change and promulgate the revision to the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. As the County Manager annotated, it was last adopted in two thousand and fifteen. It's a five-year cycle to update. However, last year during COVID, the state granted an extension because we were decisively committed to their COVID response. And so I'm going to turn it over here to James Yates to walk you through the update process and the changes that we're recommending to the plan. James?
All right, I'm going to start sharing my screen. All right, is everyone seeing the presentation mode now?
No, still on the...
It's on the slide mode. It's not presentation.
All right, all right, stand by. About now?
Yep.
There you go.
All right, all right, so County Manager and Director Harden's done a good job at introducing this. So I'll just go ahead and jump in. I'm James Yates with Thurston County Emergency Management. And what we want to do today is provide you an overview of the updated Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, the basic plan component of that, answer any questions that you may have. And we'd like to receive guidance on moving forward and how you desire us to move forward, to promulgate and adopt the plan. So just a little background, as mentioned earlier, there's a statutory requirement under R C W thirty eight fifty-two. It's required that Thurston County develop, implement, and maintain a comprehensive emergency management plan. As mentioned before, the current plan was adopted by the Board in two thousand and fifteen, and it's now up for review with the new revision cycle. The purpose of this plan is to guide Thurston County's actions before, during, and after a disaster. This plan is in accordance with the Washington State Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, the National Response Framework, and the National Incident Management System. This plan is, it's an all-hazards plan, and what we mean by that is it doesn't address any one specific hazards, but rather, the plan is developed to go through all phases of emergency management for whatever type of hazard we may find ourselves subject to. The updated draft has been reviewed by the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. And maintaining the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan under R C W thirty eight fifty-two allows the county to receive federal grant funding for local agency needs. Everyone should have been provided a briefing packet. That briefing packet contains a draft Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, Basic Plan. The Basic Plan, as you'll see later when I show you the organization of the plan, it's a kind of the framework or the, you know, more of an executive summary of the overall plan. And then there's also annexes that have detailed emergency support functions that together compromise the entire plan. You were also provided a sheet with a summary of changes that shows you the changes in this update from the two thousand and fifteen plan that was adopted. Also have the complete citations of R C W thirty eight fifty-two seventy and WAC one eighteen dash thirty that I'll summarize, but those were provided for you to have the complete citations. Also, there is a Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan update schedule. As I said, the Basic Plan is just one component. That's really the policy and the part that's promulgated by the Board. And the emergency support function annexes are developed by those agencies that lead and support the implementation of those for the operational measures. And that's, that update schedule shows you how that's scheduled through this entire five-year update cycle. And then finally, you were provided an emergency support function responsibilities matrix that shows you county departments and elected offices, as well as voluntary organizations that are assigned responsibilities in the different annexes and those actions that you're directing them for. That's also in the plan, but I provided it to you, so you won't have to go through the plan if you needed to reference it. The statutory requirements, as I said, I provided the complete citation for your reading pleasure. Here, I've summarized them. R C W thirty eight fifty-two. In summary, that requires us to have a comprehensive emergency management plan. And our plan was updated to meet all of the current requirements that are in that specific legal citation. Also, we are required to submit the plan to state emergency management for review. And they don't approve our plan, but they review it and provide us a letter to show that we meet the requirements of the R C W and that our plan meets minimum standards. WAC one eighteen dash thirty dash sixty requires every political subdivision in the state to maintain a current plan of operations based on a hazard analysis. And this plan, it also requires the plan to be promulgated by a letter signed by the current executive head. We discussed this with the Prosecuting Attorney's Office for clarification. And what they directed us from the requirements of the WAC is that the letter can be signed by the Board. All the members of the Board signed it in two thousand and fifteen. Or the Board could choose to delegate that promulgation letter to be signed by the County Manager or by the Department Director. However, the Board would still need to adopt the plan through resolution. So the next thing I was going to do is I was going to jump in and just give you an overview of the plan. And, you know, I'd like to state that there'll be time at the end to ask any questions, but if you have questions or require any clarification as I'm going through the briefing, you know, please let me know as I go. So I want to hit just, you know, some of the high points of the updated plan for you. The purpose of the plan is to guide Thurston County actions before, during, and after a disaster, so it's not just a response plan. It describes who does what, when, where, and how in order to mitigate from, prepare for, respond to, and recover from any type of disaster or hazard. The scope of this plan, it applies to all Thurston County government, as well as cooperating agencies. This graphic shows you just some organization of the plan. As I said, what we're presenting to you today is the draft updated Basic Plan. The Basic Plan is supported by annexes, appendices, and attachments that provide more specificity and detail to specific support functions for disaster response. This is a list of the policies that are covered in the plan. Yeah, I won't, they're elaborated on each of these nine policy issues that are in the plan. It's in the plan there. I won't, you know, read through the entire plan to you. But I did want to focus on this since the Board and only the Board has authority to implement these policy statements that are part of the plan and that your endorsement and adoption of the plan is where you endorse these policies. So what I can do is I can run through every one of them or if there's any that you have particular questions on or would wish for me to elaborate on.
You're asking the Board?
Yes.
Maybe you can just go through if I may, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Maybe just go through your script, and along the way, I'm sure the Board may have questions.
Okay, so did you want me to just quickly run through each one? Is that what you're asking?
Very high level, yeah, very high level.
Okay, so at a very high level, personal preparedness, this basically is just a policy stating that, you know, that county actions and response won't substitute for individual responsibility for a disaster that's, you know, known through the media and that people need to take personal preparedness. Employees to confirm safety of immediate family, just so that as we have county employees come to staff the E C C or to respond in the field, that first and foremost, the policy is for them to ensure the safety of their households so that they can work with optimal effectiveness and efficiency when they come in to support all the citizens of the county. Suspension of day-to-day activities, that there may be cases with severity and magnitude of an incident where we may have to suspend some or all of county activities and use those resources and personnel to direct toward the disaster response. A waiver of permit requirements, this would be waiving, you know, any permit requirements temporarily that deal with environmental, environmental or permitting for emergency, for emergency work that would be performed to protect life or property. And if this action was taken, there would have to be specific action at that time by the Board under a disaster declaration using your emergency or special powers. Disaster funding, this is, this policy just states that, you know, we can't spend money we don't have. If there's money required for the response, then the Board will be responsible to find funding if department budgets have been exceeded. Mutual aid, I think that's probably self-explanatory. Consumer protection, just that any alleged unfair legal business practices will be referred to the State Attorney General's Office, and if we receive them, we'll refer those to the Attorney General's Office. Non-discrimination, that the county will not discriminate for any services or activities provided during the response. And that we will follow the National Incident Management System and use the principles and fundamentals of NIMs and the Incident Command System, I C S, in our disaster operations and in the E C C. Hazard assessment, as we mentioned in the statute, one of the requirements is that the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan be based on hazard assessment.
Yeah, can you go back for a second?
Yes.
On number four, waiver of permit requirements, I think the intent of that policy is to expedite the construction of any particular projects in response to that emergency.
Correct, in the case of life safety.
Right, and but also, I believe that if there's any mitigation to environmental impacts, that will have to be mitigated after the fact.
Correct.
I'm just going to clarify that it's, that it's not just waiving the permits. The waiving the permits is to expedite the construction, but any type of mitigation requirements under the normal permits will have to be follow-up.
Yeah, just to add to that, also, obviously, that has to be done, you know, as approved and provided for in state law. It's not a blanket waiver.
Right, thank you.
All right, any other questions on policies?
I don't think so. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, was there a question?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so as I was saying, the law requires that we do a hazard assessment to base our plan upon. We used our most current hazard assessment that was done as part of our hazard mitigation plan for the Thurston region. In two thousand and seventeen, that plan's updated every five years and a new hazard assessment is done. These were the hazards that were identified that Thurston County is subject to. We took these hazards, this hazard assessment is part of the mitigation planning process. And we evaluated them under three criteria. One is a probability that it'll occur in the next twenty-five years. Is there potential for significant damage to buildings or infrastructure? And the potential for loss of life. If the answer was yes to one or any of these criteria, then they're shown in this table that showed those hazards that we have are subject to the highest risk using the risk formula of probability of occurrence times vulnerability or loss equalling the risk. And then these are the hazards from that longer list that we have the high or moderate risk of within Thurston County. Planning assumptions, the next two slides show the assumptions that this plan is based upon. Again, I won't, I won't read through all of them or through the whole plan. But I would like to highlight just a few of them and answer any questions you may have on ones I don't highlight. So one thing I'd like to highlight is that initial response by Thurston County is going to be to do the greatest lifesaving potential under the circumstances. So in other words, our policy is to do the greatest good for the greatest number of people. Also, that we assume that we have trained staff to staff the Emergency Coordination Center as needed. And also, we assume that there may be some incidents with little or no advance warning. And in that case, it may take some time in order to staff and actually activate the Emergency Coordination Center. We also assumed in developing this plan, in order to maintain essential services, you know, we'll try to maintain essential services as soon as and for as long as possible. However, in some very severe incidents or disasters of high magnitude, some or all county services may be lost. In that case, it will be necessary for us to set priorities. We also assume that citizens would be self-sufficient for two weeks after a disaster. And through our public education program, we promote the Two Weeks Ready campaign. And then finally, we assume that this plan cannot guarantee a perfectly functioning emergency response system. What the county will try to do is, you know, we'll try to do the best we can with what we have, given the situation, information, and the resources that are available. Next, I'd like to go through and just type, yes?
Can you just jump in? Can you go back one slide real quick? One of the biggest significant changes to this plan is the second bullet. Citizens must be prepared to be self-sufficient for at least two weeks. The previous message in the previous part of the plan was seventy-two hours, three days, three ways. There's a whole bunch of different ways of, that was put out in messaging to the public. This is an update that recognizes that it's going to be at least two weeks after a disaster, a major catastrophic disaster, before government may be able to reach out to people. So that's a significant change that the public will, has started to see and will continue to see.
Thank you. Were there any questions on planning assumptions?
Anything from the Board?
No, sir.
So you're good to go, James?
All right, I'll move on to Concepts of Operations. And again, I'll just, I'll just highlight a few of the high points in what's covered in the subsection of Concepts of Operations in the plan. We have, one of the things that's, we've included in the update of this plan is involvement of the whole community. So what we're saying there is it's not, it's not government going it alone and just telling people what to do. That we're trying to involve the whole community in our response. And I would focus among these groups listed here. That also includes people with limited English proficiency. Operational objectives, we added operational objectives from national standards of incident management that our objectives would be life safety, incident stabilization, protection of property, and protection of the environment. Also, I'd like to highlight the section on Declaration of Emergency Process. We follow what's in Thurston County Code of Ordinances Title III for that Declaration of Emergency Process. And in the plan, it delineates a little further the lines of succession. So obviously, the Board would do a disaster declaration. If only one member of one Commissioner was available, they would constitute a quorum to do that disaster declaration. If the Board was not available, it could be done by the County Manager and through the lines of succession to the Deputy County Manager, the Director of Emergency Services, and the Emergency Management Manager. The next slide, this shows our, I'm sorry, was there a question?
No.
Okay. The E C C activation level, our activation levels were changed to conform with the State Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan and the National Incident Management System. So we activate our Emergency Coordination Center to the level necessary so that we can effectively and efficiently respond. And then we'll demobilize resources when they are no longer needed. Level three is normal operations. That's a steady state where we have our emergency management staff available and monitoring situations during normal operating hours. And we also have staff identified as a primary and alternate after-hours duty officer that can be contacted after hours by T-COM or the State Emergency Operations Officer. Level two would be activating the Emergency Coordination Center. This is enhanced or partial activation. This could be the staffing of one or multiple positions within the Emergency Coordination Center. It could include expanded hours of operations, could also include twenty-four-hour operations. Level two is what we were at for the six months we were activated for COVID response. Level one would be a full activation. This would be a catastrophic incident or where county resources for the response may be overwhelmed. This would be a full operation, would include staffing of the Emergency Coordination Center with all department and offices represented, as well as primary and support agency representatives from some of our voluntary support agencies. Again, this could be expanded hours or twenty-four hours of operation. And then finally, just a few other things covered in the Concept of Operations that were added to this plan is Communications and Logistics. This is more of an overview. We provide very specific detailed information in separate emergency support function annexes. ESF two for Communications and ESF seven for Logistics. Also, financial management in the current plan. Financial management, direction and control, and intergovernmental coordination were broken out into separate support annexes. But we are, it was very redundant because we covered a lot of that information in the Basic Plan. So what we did is we actually integrated all those up components into the Basic Plan rather than a separate support annexes. And we worked very closely with the Auditor's Office and Financial Services for the updates to the financial management information. Roles and responsibilities, the plan outlines specific responsibilities for all Thurston County government and cooperating agencies. The responsibilities for organizations that aren't part of Thurston County government are voluntary. You know, just because the Board can direct the departments to take actions, but it's voluntary by the nonprofit support agencies. When necessary, there might be additional responsibilities assigned to departments and agencies that aren't in the plan because some, we can't predict everything that's going to happen based on a given situation. There may be actions that need to be taken and assigned to departments to accomplish in order that we can accomplish the incident objectives. The Board of County Commissioners, roles and responsibilities are outlined as a sitting policy. The Disaster Policy Advisory Group can be convened by the Board or the County Manager, the Director of Emergency Services, or by the Emergency Management Manager in order to develop and formulate policy courses of action to be brought before the Board for decisions. The Emergency Coordination Center purely focuses on operational elements for the response. And when a policy issue arises, that will be sent over to the Board for decisions and activation and convening of a disaster policy advisory group that could consist of the County Manager, Director of Emergency Management, you know, Department Directors or elected officials that are needed for formulation of a particular policy issue. The Disaster Recovery Team outlines their responsibilities if that disaster recovery team is staffed and activated. The Emergency Management Council is a standing council. It's made up of emergency managers representing the county, the cities, and all the tribes from the county. The Emergency Management Council responsibilities in the plan are for an incident that is going to affect all of Thurston County. It's, their roles and responsibilities is really to be used as a group that can be brought together so that we can make sure that we have a coordinated, multi-jurisdictional response so that the actions of Thurston County and actions of the city of Olympia aren't working against each other, that we're all working in coordination. The Disaster Assistance Council is an organization, it's basically the county voluntary organizations active in disaster. For instance, the United Way, the Red Cross, the Salvation Army. Their roles and responsibilities are to provide those human service-type actions and support during a response and recovery. And then finally, it outlines the general roles and responsibilities for the emergency support functions. It's specified again in those emergency support function annexes. But this shows which, for each emergency support function, what department or supporting agency is, has the primary responsibility and the supporting responsibility for the implementation of those functions. Then Plan Maintenance, we have a five-year review cycle. As we mentioned earlier, we also, after any E C C activation, whether it's for an exercise or a real-world event, we'll do an after-action review and, you know, see if there was anything in the plan that didn't work well that we need to reevaluate and perhaps change. Or perhaps we did something in the response that wasn't part of the plan, but it worked very well. Then we would evaluate that to see if that is something that should be added to the plan. All revisions to the plan that deal with county policy will be submitted back to the Board for approval of those changes. The ESF, the Emergency Support Function Annexes, those could be revised by the functional lead agency where it's just dealing with operational issues, as long as it's still consistent with basic plan policy. If there's any recommended changes for changes to policy, of course, that would come back to the Board for your approval of any policy changes. Training and exercise, the Emergency Management Manager is responsible to develop a training program for county program for county staff and to annually exercise the plan or components of the plan. And exercising the plan or components of the plan, that could be through exercises or that could be through a six-month activation for for an incident as we had in 2020. Then finally, the next step, so we want to answer any questions that you may have. We are seeking board guidance for how you desire us to move forward with the plan promulgation process. If if you're you're happy with the the plan that we have presented to you, or if there's any changes that you want made to that, and then promulgation of the plan, either through a letter of promulgation by the board, or if you choose to delegate that to the county manager or to the emergency services director, and then adoption of the plan through resolution by the board, and then finally, to meet our deadline to submit that updated plan to the state for review by December 31st of this year. So I'll I'll open it to any any questions you may have.
Commissioner Edwards?
Are you a sergeant major, James?
No, I was the first sergeant.
Oh, first sergeant, okay, well, about the same thing. Good job. No, I don't have any questions, but good presentation.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, it was a good presentation. So one of my first questions is, you know, this hadn't been adopted since 2015. How how come it it hasn't or it wasn't adopted since 2015?
Yeah, so if I may clarify, Commissioner, it was, so it was adopted by the board in 2015. We're on a five-year review cycle.
Okay.
Because, and we usually start with the basic plan because that's kind of the framework, and then we spend the rest of the five-year cycle each year developing those emergency support function annexes. So it would have been, if it had have been for COVID and the state extending the cycle by a year, we would have been giving you this presentation a year ago.
Okay.
Did, was it?
Yes, it did, thank you. And my next question is, how does this, we had a presentation about kind of a disaster in our local agreement, how does this play into that?
I think I'll defer that to Kurt or Sandy.
Disaster recovery, Commissioner, I'll answer that real quick, and Sandy, I'll jump in if I leave anything out. The disaster recovery component of this is part of CEMP, and so that when we do the disaster recovery interlocal agreement, that's putting that framework in place to develop the recovery component as we move forward. And so Sandy, if you have anything else to add, but it is a part of the post-disaster piece of CEMP, correct?
That's correct.
So so it falls under, James, if you could go back, I want to say one or two slides, I wanted to, you had it in your list there. Maybe it's farther back, hold on, there we go, back up, come back. There we go, roles and responsibilities. So Commissioner, what we have here is a disaster recovery team. That's a component of the disaster recovery teams, what we're talking about for that interlocal agreement.
Okay, thank you.
And then I also want to point out the Disaster Policy Advisory Group, that has been in play since for COVID, for COVID-19, the county manager convened the Disaster Policy Advisory Group starting last year to address issues regarding policy. An example of that would be the recent masking guidelines that were issued by the LNI as a result of CDC changing guidance. Disaster Policy Advisory Group addresses those kinds of policies.
And we had a meeting just yesterday.
Yes, just yesterday.
And the Disaster Policy Advisory Group has been part of our plan for many years because we've been fortunate not to have very severe disasters. I believe it was Sandy, it was before I was here, but that it was, might have been convened for some of the floods that we had in 2007, 2008.
Okay.
Definitely was.
Yep. And James, you didn't just say we were fortunate not to have very severe disasters, because you know what that means for
Hopefully, I didn't jinx us.
There you go, okay.
Good.
Yes, sir, thank you.
James, you may have explained this and I missed it, but when it, when you're talking there in the last slide about the plan promulgation process, or PPPs, I like to call it, what what does that involve? What's next? Or what what? Is there a process set in place, or you need direction from the board in some way?
So yes, thank you, Commissioner, we do need some direction from the board because we can tell it with prosecuting attorney's office, and based upon their review of the RCW in the WAC, there's a few courses of action that the board can choose to take, you know, provided that you like the plan as is and you don't want any changes, then the next step would be there's a requirement for a promulgation letter done by the chief, the head executive officer, I believe is how it's cited. Prosecuting Attorney's Office said that could be the board. We had all three commissioners signed it in 2015 for the letter. However, Prosecuting Attorney's Office said if you choose, you could delegate the promulgation letter to the county manager or department director.
Oh, yeah, okay, you covered that, yeah.
Then there were, I'm sorry.
No, no. I didn't realize that's what you were talking about when you said promulgation. You mean formal formal submittal to the state type thing.
Yeah, so what we've done before is that letter of promulgation from the executive body or the delegation of, as we found out, can be. We incorporate that as, you know, part of the intro to the plan, so that shows the promulgation letter. But then the board also, we would bring before the board a request to do a resolution to adopt them.
Okay. I guess what I was wondering is, so prior to us saying we had, we were happy with the final draft, do we have to have a public hearing? Do we have to, is there more outreach to be involved, or is, are we at the stage where the board can basically say, we're we're happy with this, let's promulgate?
So I mean, you can obviously, you know, choose to do any of those actions with the prosecuting attorney's office has told us is that the only thing that you're required to do is the the promulgation letter and resolution adopting the plan. Of course, you know, you can choose to do, you know, anything else you choose to do, but that's the minimum requirement.
Okay.
And and Commissioner Menzel, this is Kurt. I I think what we're recommending is is that either a consent item or a department item on one of the board and county commissioner agendas to be able to formally present the plan during one of your commissioner meetings, and then delegating either the county manager or the department director the ability to sign that letter for you.
But we would also need a resolution from the board.
Right, that would be part of it, right, that would be part of that.
Okay, county manager, do you have any suggestions here as next steps?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, so and I appreciate the question of promulgation. So that's very technical lingo within the emergency management aspects of of the plan, so thank you for the explanation. So the next steps, as Kurt stated, we'll bring for your consideration an AIS, and I think the AIS will include a delegation of authority, if you choose to, for that letter to be part of the plan. And then I believe on an additional AIS, one is when we bring the resolution for a formal adoption. Are you are you expecting a single AIS to do both?
We could do a single AIS to do both, or we could do it separate, but, you know, my recommendation would be to do both since we've done this briefing for you and answered some of your questions already, and to streamline the process.
So next steps will be for you to see a formal AIS to grant to this plan, Commissioners, if you have any other questions or deviations from the process.
Is that a thumbs up from the board members?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, three thumbs up for that.
Okay, so there you go.
And then that concludes our presentation.
Thanks, everybody. Good to see you and good job.
Okay.
Good job, thank you.
Have a great afternoon.